Okay, we're back from executive session and we're going to start with old business with AB 16-113, which is Consider Approval of Ordinance Adopting Updated City of Bothell Park Impact Fees. And we have a staff presentation to kick us off by the Director Keats.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I just got a quick presentation for you and basically follows up on presentation from Randy Young a couple of weeks ago. So, as you know, on the 14th of June, Randy did present the overview of the proposed park impact fee program, the new program. Council asked questions and gave direction. So, with Randy's work, a few of the recommended changes include investment per person replaces acres per person. Citywide replaces the multiple zones, so the 13 or so zones in the current program would be recommended to be eliminated. Parks and open space replaces regional and local. Residential and commercial replaces residential only. And residential size replaces residential types, as we have it set up now, single-family, multifamily, et cetera. Proposed effective date, we put in a placeholder in the ordinance of September 1st of this year. And it also established the new park and open space impact fee rates. The rates are listed here on the far right-hand column, ranging from the less than 500 square feet up to 2,000 more and the industrial or business impact fee at $1.09 per square foot. This is a recap of the rates as proposed. So, as you can see, our current rates right in the red, the zero indicated by Shoreline, Linwood, et cetera, is that they don't impose impact fees and then gives you a comparison of how we compare with the other, some of the other cities that were customarily compared to. So, we range pretty much in the middle. And this is same comparison with the business impact fee. And also from Randy's presentation, as you can see in the far right, just an estimate of potential impact fee receipts over the period listed there from 2010 to 2015, we took in just over $1 million in park impact fees from 2016 through 2021, was potential or estimated about just over $10 million. And just for way of reference, looking at our current capital facilities plan, some of the projects that could potentially be funded with park impact fees include the synthetic turf upgrade for North Creek Field Number Three. All that could be included in that would be any of the increased capacity, the value, they should say, associated with increased capacity. Then you have First Lieutenant Nicholas Madrazo Park Development, Park at Bothell Landing, again percent associated with the increased capacity, Horse Creek Plaza, North Creek Forest Development, a North Bothell acquisition, and lastly, the Blythe Park improvements, again the percent associated with the increased capacity for the work. And that concludes my brief report and happy to answer any questions and also have Michaela here as well from CAI.
Okay. Is there any questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
So, I'm looking at the computation section of the ordinance and I had a question in regards to the calculation and it talks about if a developer elects not to have the impact fee determined according to subsection A of this section. And I was curious how often developers choose to prepare and submit independent fee calculations.
Well, that's a question I might have to defer to Tom and Tom's not, I don't see him here. Since I have been here, I haven't encountered that at all.
Okay. Well, maybe he'll come back after I ask my second question. And then the second question was under refunds of fees paid. I understand that prior we had by section, impact fees by section, and so we had to return them. So now it says any funds not expended or encumbered by the end of the calendar quarter immediately following 10 years are refunded. And is that a typical of most ordinances?
I think-
In regards to park impact fees or impact fees in general?
Yeah. If you don't spend the park impact fees in a certain amount of time, which I believe is 10 years, you're mandated to refund them. And we have refunded a fair amount of park impact fees, or at least I have signed off on a number of them and they usually were associated with the subareas where we had difficulty having any kind of projects associated with the, any impact fee revenue.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
If Director Burdette comes back, we'll ask his question, ask your question. Councilmember Sandberg?
If projects get, if park projects get added to the capital facility plan in this upcoming process, will those projects then be eligible to use the future collected impact fees?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay.
That's it. Any other questions from council? Councilmembers, Baybee?
Great, thank you. Could you go back to your last slide, please? So, as I look at this, there's one, two, three, four, five and a half projects in King County and one and a half projects in Snohomish County. Do you have an estimate of how much we're going to be, revenue will be generating out of Snohomish County versus King County?
Unfortunately, no, I don't have that data.
It just seems like we've got a very unequal amount of park projects in King County and Snohomish County is hurting severely for parks. And we, on this list that you have here, there's only one and a half projects, half of the North Creek Forest and then a North Bothell Park acquisition. I just think it's, you know, we're, and that's where a lot of the growth is coming, is in the north end of the city, in the Snohomish County side of the city. So, I just think that maybe the potentially can fund, we need to really consider more in the Snohomish County side because they're being impacted and have very few parks up there.
Yeah, I agree. And in the CFP update, I hope one of the new projects will be some improvements for Cedar Grove Park. So, that's at least one additional in Snohomish County.
All right. And maybe a skate park or two in there? Thank you.
Is he? Director Burdette? We had a question for you while you were gone.
Sorry, Tom.
It's on the parking back-
Side talking with Bruce. Can you repeat the question?
So, my question was in regards to computation and there's a section B that talks about if a developer elects not to have the impact fee determined according to subsection A, then they can prepare and submit an independent fee calculation study. And I was curious how often that happens and what are the, I don't know, guidelines?
Well, in my career, I've never had that happen with parks. Typically, that's, but it is in most impact fee ordinances and it's there typically for calculation for transportation. And I guess it could be used for parks if there was some unique type of residential development. But generally speaking, it's used for proposing their own transportation fee with their own traffic study, in conjunction with their own traffic study. Rather than using the standard ITE manual, they would then come back with their own trip generation and their own calculation, which we could either verify with our own staff, our own traffic engineering staff, or we could have a peer review by a consultant.
Okay, great. I was just curious how that would work, what it would look like. Thanks.
Any other questions inspired by the weight? Okay. So, I guess a motion would be in order. Deputy Mayor?
I move the recommended action.
Move by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew to, let's get the recommended action up here. Approve the proposed ordinance adopting the updated City of Bothell Park impact fee program. Is there any deliberation on the motion? Councilmembers, Baybee?
Since I didn't see anybody raising their hand for deliberation, I'd like to make an amending motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, my amending motion, that we implement this effective November 1st.
Is there a second? Are you going to second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
Would you like to speak to your, it's moved and seconded that we would amend the effective date to November 1, 2016. Would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you, Mayor. I initially wanted to make it January 1, but I thought I'd find a middle ground. I think it's only fair for people that have gone through the process and started budgeting for their projects that they'd be given some time to get their projects in and that anybody coming in after that, they know what the new fee is going to be, that this could impact some developers that have, you know, they've achieved their financing and things like that now that it could be a hit to them. So, I just thought it would be fair for those people that are in process and far enough out to, for them to get going and have this done with certainty in their budget and yet still implements before the first of the year.
Would you like to speak to your second?
Well, I wanted to hear the reasoning and I can appreciate that we want to give consideration to budgeting that's already occurred. And we had talked about extending that date so that it might catalyze development, people who were thinking about proposals but hadn't quite submitted their permits yet to do that. But I think on further reflection, I'm still comfortable with the 60-day, because this is essentially what it is, it's a 60-day implementation phase. So, I'll be voting against the amending motion.
Any further discussion on the amending motion? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote so it's amending motion to have an effective date of November 1, 2016. Motion fails with Councilmember Baybee in the affirmative. Is there any further amending motions? Deputy Mayor?
I propose that we split the difference and make it a 90-day.
So, is that an amending motion? Okay. So, the amending motion is to give a 90-day effective date of, oh boy, I don't know what date that would be off the top of my head.
October 1.
October 1? So, the amending motion is to make the effective date October 1, 2016. Do you want to speak to your motion? Deputy Mayor?
Well, I think I spoke last week about it. I think it's a big change, it's a 300% increase and, you know, I can see both sides and so I guess I'm proposing that we split the difference and give a little bit more warning, but also not wait too long to institute the change.
Okay. Did you want to speak to your second?
I think I could echo it right here.
Okay. Any further deliberation on the amending motion to have an effective date of October 1? I'm sorry. Yeah. No. Whoa. Oh, yeah, October 1. All right. So, the amending motion is to make the effective date October 1. Please place your vote. Passes four to two with Councilmembers McNeil and Agnew in the negative. And so now we're back to the underlying motion, which is to approve the proposed ordinance adopting the updated City of Bothell impact fee program. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Councilmember Baybee?
Great, thank you. I want to thank members for supporting at least a 90-day implementation date. I know that in earlier discussions that there's talk of the possibility and it didn't appear to have the support of implementing in phases. And I would be in support of that also, but I, as I recall from the discussions then, that there wasn't the support for implementing in phases. I wish that we could do that so that it was, as Deputy Mayor just stated, a 300% increase. I think everybody understands that we haven't done this in a long time, reviewed our parks' mitigation fee, we haven't done it in a long time. And again, I thought maybe fair would be implementing in phases, but I will support this.
Any further deliberation on the main motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'd like to thank staff and our consultant community attributes. I thought they did a terrific job on updating our park impact fees and I look forward to those increased revenues that you pointed out in one of your slides for the next 10 years. And it seemed to me that in the information provided, that is revenue that we can bond against and I think it would be great for us to be thinking about acquisition in North Bothell, acquisition of park property and bonding against our future park impact fees to accomplish that sooner rather than later while land is cheaper now than it will be in the future. So, I'm in full support of this. I think the 90-day implementation phase is a reasonable one and I hope that if there are developers with projects that are on the fence or in preparation for moving forward, especially in the downtown area, that they will see this as an opportunity to move forward with those projects.
Great. Any further deliberation? Councilmember McNeil?
I also want to thank staff and the consultant for all their hard work on this. It has been a long time and making sure that we have impact fees that will help serve and development pay for itself within our community is very important. I had a couple of notes that I jotted down here in going through this process, but a couple of the things that really stood out to me was that looking at other cities and going to meetings regionally and listening to the other council members and how they get things paid for within their city, the one thing that resonated most with me is that development pays for development, not the residents or citizens within that community. So, if we want to have a flourishing park system, we want to have transportation, good transportation system, we want to have safe streets, safe sidewalks for our kids to walk on, we want to do all this, but we want to make sure that the development helps to pay for it because they are bringing in the new impact. So, I want to, you know, for me, making sure that we don't put that burden on the current citizens was important. On a daily basis, I have the opportunity to work with other municipalities and pay these same impact fees in Kirkland, Simamish, Medina, Mercer Island. And the one thing that stands true on every single time that I go in there, the people that are paying those fees have no problem paying it because they're getting the advantage. When we drive through Bothell, we see signs all over Bothell for these brand-new developments and they say six bedrooms, large lots, parks, North Shore Schools District. Those are all things that they're selling and they're using to develop in this community and yet we have not taken advantage of making sure they help to pay for that. So, I'm thankful that we're moving forward. It's been 20 years and hopefully we don't wait another 20 to make sure that we have what makes Bothell great and that's a great flourishing park system, good transportation and safe streets and public safety for our community. Thank you.
I think Councilmember McNeil just nailed it. I was going to add to it that it was extremely helpful to have the study in place. I had a conversation with a Master Builders Association representative and they said, you know, it's hard to dispute something when you have a study that's very clearly states and shows the obligation of development and what they should be paying into the pot with, the public still has to pay, by the way. We still pay taxes and we still are going to contribute to new parks and updating our current parks. So, it's just really, it's a fraction of the park system that they are contributing. We haven't updated that, I think we've said this enough times, since the 90s. So, it is time. I support doing the 90 days. I didn't feel comfortable going further than that because we've been waiting since 1998. So, oh, you wanted to speak and I kind of ahead of you, I'm sorry. Anyhow, so I will be supporting the motion and Deputy Mayor, you have four.
Again, I want to thank the staffing consultant. I thought that was a really excellent study. I hope that we put it on our calendars to update it more frequently. 20 years is a really long time. And I, even though it's a large increase, it has been a really long time and I wanted to speak to something that Councilmember Baybee said he wasn't here to hear the conversation, but we have certain items that are, we think we'll be adding to the CFP, such as the Wayne Golf Course and some other item, some land acquisitions potentially in Snohomish County. And my understanding is that we can use the impact fees to pay for them, but they cannot be added to increased impact fees until there's a new study done. And so, just for clarity there. So, I'm in full support of this. I'm excited to add to our parks. So, thank you.
You don't want to, you're good? Okay. So, now we're ready to vote for the approval of the proposed ordinance adopting the updated City of Bothell impact fee program with the amendment to have an effective date of October 1, 2016. Go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. And the next item on our agenda-
If I might, real quick, I didn't want to say anything during the main discussion. There's another item that relates to impact fees that'll be on the July 12th agenda and that's when do we collect the fees. Right now, we collect these fees at the permit issuance and frankly, that doesn't need to happen that early. It can happen later in the process. But we didn't want to put that into this discussion because it also is going to be a policy that will affect streets and other impact fees. So, we'll be picking that part of this up with all the other impact fees on July 12th. So, I didn't want to stop your discussion on the one to confuse the matter, but that's why that piece of information isn't in this ordinance, but it will become a part of the ordinance as amending all the collection times or the deferral process.
Great. Thank you.
Mayor? I just also want to make one quick addition. I just want to make sure council knows that this was certainly a team effort in finance, community development, public works, everybody was involved in this. As a matter of fact, I think the decision to go forward with the park impact fees was actually made by Aaron before I even got here. So, I just want to give thanks to all the great help we had from the other departments involved. So, thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so we're on to our first public hearing, which is on AB 16-114, which is a public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance authorizing a November 8, 2016 election for a safe streets and sidewalks levy lift. And I believe I opened the public hearing now, so I officially am opening the public hearing and we'll begin with a staff presentation by Aaron Leanhart, the Public Works Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may have heard, or you will have heard much of this this evening, but in true public hearing format, I'm giving an extended presentation this evening. So, we're here tonight, it's the city's responsibility to provide safe passage for freight and for vehicles and for pedestrians. So, the ballot measure, the ordinance that's before you tonight, is essentially responding to communities' needs. Both the city survey, as well as public input that you hear here, as well as staff receives, show that safe streets and sidewalks are top priorities for Bothell residents and businesses. Council, you are focusing on streets and sidewalks because they are urgent issues and we have a real funding crisis. And we feel that Bothell families and businesses deserve improvements to the roadway, sidewalks, and safe routes to school. Tonight's specific topics, of course, the proposed ballot measure, we'll go into detail there, talk about why now and also talk about what's at stake. The ballot measure we're proposing for November 2016 would be a 50 cent per thousand assessed valuation property tax for a nine-year duration. The estimated annual cost to the Bothell median home, $188 a year. This would generate an annual revenue of about $4 million, about half of which would go to street operations. One point, almost 1.7 million would go to pavement preservation and then the remainder would go to the sidewalk walkway program and crosswalk construction. Why now? So, Bothell has, in the past 17 years, been subsisting on transportation and street revenues that have been declining. We've lost over $1 million a year in ongoing annual revenue specifically for this purpose. Part of the reason that some of this funding has gone away has been from voter initiatives. And what we've heard from the voters is that they demand efficiency from government and they also want a say, they want a voice in what services they receive from the government. While many other cities over the years have asked for voter-approved funding, Bothell has not asked for funding for operations. We've made it through the lean times, we've added infrastructure along the way. Consistent with regional vision, we annexed into King County. Consistent with community vision, we've added projects such as crossroads, eliminating a very congested intersection in the middle of our downtown. We've expanded Bothell-Gerit Highway. And a lot of these projects, we've been able to do largely with grant funding, whether it's state funding or federal funding, but that doesn't help us maintain it in the long term. We have the responsibility to take care of those improvements now that we've made them. The other reason why now, we chose not to do this during the Great Recession, we've just come out of an economic downturn that it didn't seem appropriate to add to the tax burden or even ask the taxpayers to add to their tax burden at that point in time. So, what's at stake? So, as I mentioned, about half of this measure would pay for street operations. And just as a note what street operations are, there are day-to-day operations, roadway patching, pothole repair, roadside mowing, sidewalk repair, maintenance of our signals and our streetlights, keeping the right-of-way clear of hazards. Also, on a less frequent basis, it's also emergency and storm response, removing trees and limbs from the road after a windstorm, snow and ice control when it does get cold and when it snows. The current street operations budget for this year is just under $2.7 million. And you'll notice there's a chunk of that over there, it's just a little over $1 million a year, that's already spoken for. These are essentially the street systems paying their bills, streetlight fees, keeping the signals on, paying our insurance bill and surface water runoff fee. So, we have about $1.4 million in ongoing revenues for street operations. So, as you can see from this, we have $300,000 left over from our existing revenues to fund the rest of the street fund. The other thing is pavement preservation. So, roughly, I think 40% of the measure would fund our pavement preservation program. It would add to our pavement preservation, bringing it up to about $3 million a year. And the reason we do pavement preservation is essentially, if I equate it to our pavement to a car, it's much cheaper to maintain your car, to change the oil and to do regular maintenance than it is to replace it anytime you would need such a thing. So, the pictures that you see before you, we have a rating system called pavement condition index that we use for, to rate pavement. The picture on the left is 85 and it's a scale of, goes up to 100, being the best. So, 85, you have an excellent roadway. PCI in the middle, 64, so that you're getting to the good area. PCI of 42 on the right is poor condition, which seems pretty obvious, you look at it and it's alligator. And this is the table that we like to use quite a bit because it really shows the increased cost- the increased cost when, when you let your condition go. So, right now, our current average for all of our streets is 70 PCI. So, we're still in the, in the very good range. And our current average for arterials is 75. And the proposed investment would be to keep, to bring our arterials and collectors up to a PCI of 80 and maintain that, that condition. Sidewalks and walkways. So, the remaining funding, about 10% of the, the proposal would be for sidewalk, walkways, and crosswalk construction. We currently, we would increase our investment to a target of $900,000 a year. That would, we're estimating that sidewalks and walkways, we could build about a quarter mile of sidewalks. Right now, we're, we're building about half, if not. And sidewalks, the average cost for a sidewalk is over $3 million a mile. So, this, this won't make a huge dent, but it will give us more to work with. And it will also make us more competitive in the grant process. Without the levy, due to loss of dedicated funds, we will likely lose public work staff, which will result in slower response, fewer repairs, deferred maintenance, problems. Like I mentioned, the PCI will only get worse if we don't have money to invest in our pavement preservation, leading to higher costs in the future. We'll also have very few new sidewalks or crosswalks. Currently, we have no dedicated funding for crosswalks. Next steps for you and for the community. So, tonight's public hearing and the possibility to adopt the ordinance to place the issue on the November ballot. At that point, staff will advertise for pro and con committees for council appointment on July 19. And our public engagement continues. We've been doing presentations and providing informational tables at events, and we will continue to do that. And this is for those watching at home or, or anywhere else. This is my contact information. You all, you all know where to find me. So, I will probably switch back to, to your next steps. And Finance Director Shakman and I are here to answer questions. And I have other staff too, in case it's something that I, I can't handle.
Great. Thank you. I think the way we had it set up is that we were going to go to public comment first before we counsel deliberate. So, I have only one person on the public hearing signup sheet, and that is Bill Moritz.
Good evening again, Council. I've been watching this process, and I use the streets a lot, especially my bike. And I really get a seat-of-the-pants experience on how our, city streets are starting to fail. And I also have been, I've looked through the report that you guys did, so within the recent past, and the condition of our roads. Obviously, this is going to be potentially a tough sell for the citizens to accept this. So, I wanted to present some information that puts this in context, how we, where we stand with respect to other jurisdictions around here. Can we get that up? Got it sitting right there. Timeout. Hold the time. What do I need to do? So, what I did is I went and looked at the city taxes about the cities close by. And I did King County because I could do that quickly. Snowmish County takes me harder time to, a longer time to access. What I've listed here is the city property tax, plus for those jurisdictions that have fire district, the fire tax. And those combined together is what I consider the sort of combined city tax to compare against Bothell. And then in the bottom box, you can see where Bothell stands currently in King County. At least, my tax rate is 1.436 per thousand. So, our total sits sort of in the middle right now, or near, near the, near the top, actually. But if we add 50 cents, it's going to increase it to $11.25, which puts us at 17%. The city's tax is 17% of the total that we pay. But that turns out to only be a 4.6% increase. Nobody likes to pay taxes. I don't like to pay tax. I hate writing that check. But we've got to invest in our infrastructure. And so, while it's a tough sell perhaps, I do think we need to move forward with this. And I encourage you to, to pass, put the levy on the ballot, and let's see what the citizens say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Samard.
I was just wondering if I could ask about the table. So, there was a column that had the combined city tax rate and then the total. So, the total must be including what individual jurisdictions collect for, for example, school district and libraries. Is that...
Correct. Correct. So, so presently, in King County, you take your assessed value, multiply it by $10.75, and that's the tax you write the check for.
So, if I was to look in the combined column for Bothell now, I would see that we are among the lowest in the portion that we collect for property taxes for the city of Bothell.
Correct.
Because it's $1.43. And then with 50 cents added, then we would be more towards the middle for, in comparison to other jurisdictions' collection for city property tax only. And that, that's what you're trying to show there?
Correct. Well, no, that's the total. So, the combined is the total tax rate. The cities, the city, oh, sorry, the city tax, the, the total tax is the total tax rate, total combined. That's everything.
Yeah. And so, ours, it goes up. Ours is higher in the total tax because we might have a higher school district tax, or we might have more library tax, or whatever.
Right. Yeah. But I assume that the other jurisdictions have similar taxing obligations.
Oh, okay.
I mean, North Shore School District, that would include the obvious cities. So, did I answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think it's always important that when we think about, you know, property taxes, there's, we, we think of it as one big bill, but there's a portion that goes to the city. And it's actually a small portion in comparison to, example, the school district. The school districts capture the largest proportion of our property taxes.
Right. And that's what's represented in the last column, is the city's fraction of the total. And what it would be, it would go to from 13% to 17%. Total taxes would go up, but our share would go that much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Are you interested in being on the pro committee?
I could be.
Put you on the spot. All right. Thank you.
Could be.
I have nobody else on the signup sheet. Is anybody else interested in speaking? Please give your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Pat Thompson. I'm with the Washington State Council of County and City Employees and have the privilege of representing the, the workers you see seated here tonight in the subtle color of orange. They spent, this is very important to them. They spent all day working today, but still wanted to show up tonight to, to lend their support for this levy. Providing those resources to the citizens and providing quality services is very important to our bargaining unit here. And we appreciate the fact that the staff has done an excellent job of informing you, as well as the rest of the community, on the importance of this levy. We appreciate the responsiveness that, that you've shown. I had an opportunity to speak to a few of you since we addressed you last month. And just again, we know this is going to be a public campaign. I think that it is correct that this is going to be something that is discussed locally here in the community. But the need for it has been coming on for several years. I lobby on behalf of the union for local government funding in Olympia. And certainly, the initiatives that have taken place in local government have been harmful to the revenues and the services that we provide. We have gridlock at the federal level that doesn't help. But local government, the government that is closest to the people, does have some unique opportunities before it. And one of them is to put these type of levies out for the citizens to debate and discuss. And I think, given the, the need for this, you're, we're going to get a good positive response for that. So, appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please give your name. Podium?
Hi, I'm David Bain, and I would also like to give my support to this effort. There was some discussion earlier about how Snoomish County is inadequately parked. And I think that also applies to sidewalks and bike lanes. And know that several of the routes I take going north, when I hit the county line, bike lane disappears, or sidewalks disappear. And I think this extra funding would be an excellent opportunity for the city to invest in the Snoomish County part of the city that has been given short shrift for many years. So, I would encourage you to implement this levy and also emphasize its expenditure in Snoomish County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? Seeing none, a motion to close the public hearing is in order. Moved by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Councilmember Spivey to close the public hearing. Go ahead and place your vote when it's ready. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. So, now we move into council questions of staff, or deliberation, whichever. Deputy Mayor.
So, in reading the, I guess, proposed allocations, it looks like the increase to the annual sidewalk and walkway program is to target 900,000. So, my question was, is that additional 900,000, or is that total if this passes?
That would be total if this passes.
So, what is it currently, the budget for sidewalks, walkway?
600,000, which includes $150,000 a year in grants projected.
So, I, and then regarding crosswalks, 100,000 per year. So, is, that would be total as well?
Yes.
So, currently, what do we budget for?
None. We have no funding for crosswalks right now.
And I know that the cost of crosswalks varies tremendously, but is there an average cost for a crosswalk?
Staff estimates that we could do, improve probably three crosswalks a year.
Okay. Because the, because my only comment would be, I think a lot of the support for this levy would come from parents particularly interested in safe routes to school. And so, I'm a little concerned. I don't know how, how much of a difference a quarter mile of sidewalks will make, or how that will be perceived. That's just a comment. I, I know that there are other bigger needs, but I guess I would, I would hope that there are, if there are savings to be made, that, that additional money would be put towards sidewalks. Thanks.
Any other questions or deliberation? Councilmembers Samard.
So, you make a note in the, in the agenda bill that this levy would allow for community requested program alterations and/or changes in revenue. And can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. The, one of the reasons we chose to do a nine-year levy instead of a permanent levy, these needs are ongoing needs. And to the Deputy Mayor's point, and that pavement preservation, that requirement and that need isn't going away after nine years, our street operations, and the need to continue constructing sidewalks. However, we felt it was an opportunity if we made it a shorter period, so a nine-year period, so that we would have that opportunity to check back in with the voters. We'd have a requirement to check back in with the voters after nine years in order to renew the levy. And that would give us the opportunity to see if there was a rebalancing necessary, for example, between the different programs. There's the potential in the long term that some state or federal funding could come about to fund some of these programs at a higher level, which may require that we not make as much local investment. This is me being positive and an optimist. So, so that would be an opportunity for us to revisit that, the amount of the levy and the programs.
And do you think if the levy passed and we had those additional revenues, that we as a city would be more competitive in the grant process for federal and state funds?
I do. If we have more money to put up as a match, it automatically, in, in many programs, will make us more competitive since we have a higher percentage that we can match. Right now, our sidewalk program is, is fairly low-funded. So, we haven't been as competitive as we have in some of our other programs.
So, getting revenue increases our chance to get more revenue.
Right. It takes money to make money.
Yeah. And then, so, so of the projected revenue, annual revenue from this levy, which is about $4 million a year, about half of that would go to street operations, $1.95 million. Will, will the public be able to see a more detailed budget of what that street operations budget would be? Obviously, you created a budget to arrive at that target number.
Right. So, we have some budget information that we can provide. One of the things that comes with that, street operations, is actually reinstatement of some programs that we ended during the recession. So, an improved sidewalk maintenance program, for example, because we need, we need new sidewalks, but there are also a lot of sidewalks out there that need maintenance that we can't currently conduct. Also, a more robust pavement marking program. I know the mayor has talked to me before about the need for that. So, in addition to our ongoing operations, we are planning to add some programs. And, and that information will be available online as well.
Okay. And then if this levy measure fails, the council still has an additional revenue option to consider, which would be a council manic decision. It wouldn't be a voter-approved decision. And so, can you describe that a little bit more?
Sure. The staff, as we are putting together our budget, we are planning to propose to the council that if, in the event the ballot measure fails, that council consider a council manic transportation benefit district license fee in the amount of $20 per year per vehicle. That would generate $650,000 a year. Finance Director Shakman can probably tell you if there are other options. I believe there would be other options for similar council manic revenues.
You'd be able to increase utility taxes, sales tax. Sales tax would require voter approval, but any tax that the, the city is currently collecting could be increased to bring in those revenues.
Or we could continue to operate, for example, with a $20 annual per car fee with a revenue of 650,000 instead of anticipated 4 million. We could operate, but at a much lower level of service.
Meaning that the hole that we're digging ourselves out of continues, whoops, to get larger. One other thing about the TBD is that it takes six months' notice to DOR before we can implement. And so, that means in the first year, we'd only see 325,000, and then 650 going forward. Right now, I believe legislation still allows the council to add, after 24 months of implementation, you can add another $20 council-matically.
And then you showed us the pie of the street fund expenditures, but then there's also a pie of street, existing street fund revenues. And where do those revenues come from?
So, $500,000 of those existing revenues come from business license fees. The council a few years ago increased business license fees and dedicated that funding to street operations. So, that's half a million dollars of it. The other $900,000 of it is motor vehicle fuel tax. Right? Yes. I've done this enough times now that Tammy's teaching me these things.
So, we, we have sources of revenue that we are currently collecting. However, we're, we're in a hole for, for long-term street maintenance, and then actually this, just create, building sidewalks and crosswalks. And this helps us stay out of a deep hole and maintain our level of service.
Can I have one other thing? It's not just the revenue side that, that we've taken a hit on. We also have our, surface water fees have gone up in the street fund that we have to pay to the surface water department. We also have the traffic signals and that, but have increased significantly with... We also have the traffic signals and that, but have increased significantly with electricity and that that is required. So the street fund has been hit from both sides, both the revenue and the expenditure side. So it's just kind of like the perfect storm that we've tried to manage as best we could during the recession and the aftermath of that. So now we've just come to the point where we have to come to the council and ask for if something needs to be done, how do we proceed?
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Councilmember McNeil?
So I had a couple off-the-wall questions. Do we perform our own sidewalk construction in-house or do we contract that aloud?
We generally contract it.
Okay. Is there the possibility of doing it in-house?
There may be the possibility.
Okay. And would that same thing apply for like crosswalks and just different various things like that?
Right. So the sidewalk, so for example, the sidewalk repair program, in some cases, it would result in actually building new sidewalk panels. There are some financial regulations as far as what percentage of our budget can be in-house staff projects like that. But it's definitely something we could look at, given if we had the staff capacity too, it would be a part of the issue as well.
And would that same thing apply for like overlays and things like that?
We do some smaller projects, but the large overlays for arterials and collectors, we would contract that out too. We currently do.
And if the levy passed, we would have, we could potentially get matching funds, grant funds to help offset some of that?
Yes. And we currently have been fairly successful with overlay grants. It's been one of the things that sustained our current pavement preservation program.
Okay. On one of the pie charts you showed, streetlights, $335,000, is that correct?
It is correct. Yes.
So are we part of the relight program?
The relight program.
Yes. I just heard about that at a recent meeting.
Was it the LED?
At the AWC conference. And the LED, that's correct, where they help cities relight to that new LED. Are we part of that program at all?
So we don't directly maintain our streetlights. The streetlights in Snohomish County, at least for the most part, are Snohomish PUD streetlights. And then everything in King County, well, most of them in King County, are owned and operated by Puget Sound Energy. So there has been a program, the PUD has been working on replacing their regular streetlights with LEDs over the past few years. And all the new streetlights that we install with our projects for crossroads, for example, those are LED streetlights as well. To limit the amount that we have going electricity, some of those streetlights were fairly expensive going in. And part of our rate is the ongoing repair and replacement of those lights. So some of those crossroads, for example, they were higher than now when we're installing lights, the rates are coming down a little bit.
Okay. So I agree with one of the earlier speakers talked about, nobody wants to increase taxes. But I feel it's very important that we make sure that we do this proactively versus reactively. So I thank you for all your hard work on it. I think it's important that we make sure that message gets out on what they actually perform, the services they perform, and how important it is for, you know, parents, you know, with young kids and things like that, seniors getting to and from. So I think it's important we get that message out there as a city so that people know why we're putting this out to them. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. Excuse me. You mentioned earlier, when asked about the average cost of a crosswalk, you said, I believe you said that you could upgrade three a year. What about new crosswalks?
So that's a technical thing. So a crosswalk, technically, a crosswalk is any intersection. So when I say upgrade, I'm thinking of upgrading. So there's pavement markings and lights and so constructing or upgrading crosswalks.
Okay.
Average about three a year.
And if it's just, if it just requires signage and paint, what's the price different or, you know, what's that cost versus a, the new ones I'm seeing with, you press the button and you got the yellow strobe lights going and?
Right. So let's see, I'm looking for Jamal and he'll work his way up here. The thing is, we very rarely have a situation where we can just do pavement markings and signage. If nothing else, there are oftentimes the needs to install ADA ramps, because if you have a crosswalk there, you need to provide sufficient ADA access to that. So even just those ADA ramps get pretty expensive. So you're very quickly going from maybe a $15,000 improvement to a $25,000 improvement. But I'm going to hand it to Jamal so he can tell me I was right on all my numbers.
Jamal Mahmood, Traffic Engineer. Yes, first of all, when we install the crosswalks, we make sure that the crosswalk is warranted for safety. And if it is warranted, each situation is different and the treatment of installing crosswalks is different. For instance, sometimes we install just pavement marking with signage. Sometimes we have to install beacon, flashing beacon. And the flashing beacon costs about $15,000 material and installation. Other crosswalks, like the one we are thinking on Burj Lee and 185th, we cannot just install beacon. We need to install like hog signal, which is like something look like a signal, and that costs 100, 125,000.
Okay.
The issue with the crosswalks is not just the beacon, the flashing beacon, it is, as Ryan mentioned, is the installation of the ADA ramps. And if there is an existing ADA ramps, that is a little bit cheaper. But once we need to install, by the law, ADA ramps that meet standards, that goes like another 15, another 15, like $30,000 more.
Okay. So just spitballing a little bit here, if you put a crosswalk in, say in front of Valhalla across the 100, that might be about a $75,000 project?
I think the last time we looked, it was around 60, because we need lighting there as well, because you need to make sure that it's well lit. So even if you don't have the flashers, to make sure that in the dark that vehicles can see.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that crosswalk, Councilman.
I mean, Councilmember Agnew.
He's still your thunder.
The Valhalla Crosswalk. No, I think all my questions have been answered. I am definitely in support of this. I too, just like everyone else up here, do not want to raise taxes. But at this point in time, we've heard from the population and the public that they're very interested in our infrastructure and we have to maintain our infrastructure and improve our infrastructure. So I'll definitely be in support of this.
Now it's time for the tough questions. Or you already had a chance to go, right? Okay. So the State of the Roads report, is that posted on our website so people can have access to it to read?
I believe it is, but if it is not, it will be by tomorrow.
Okay. And I should have sent this question ahead of time, but do you know what the deferred cost in road preservation is that we have currently right now?
Oh my, Jason, anything? Yeah. We can get that to you tomorrow.
Okay.
We'll get that to council.
After the fact, well, it's tens of millions, let's put it that way, right?
It's a lot already, yes.
And then if we do nothing now, the State of the Roads report, we get it every year in our council retreats. So that's why I hope we get that out there, because I think it's really important for people to read. I've been reading that thing for four years now and just seeing the number go up and up and up. And I think it said by 2020 was the horizon. It was like an order of magnitude higher. And I don't want to say the number for sure, but what I recall is it was three city halls of deferred maintenance or deferred road preservation that's out in our road system. And that's not just kind of, if you wait to do a project, it'll cost a little more because of the cost of materials and labor goes up. That's not the same as what we're talking about with road preservation. Road preservation just climbs, not astronomically, but substantially and very fast. As soon as roads come apart, you're not trying to just repave it, you have to dig up the whole road right down to the dirt and build a base for it. So that's a huge, huge investment that if we don't, I've thought for years now, if we don't make that investment now, we will be sorry because that kind of cost to come back to and try to address in the future will be something that we won't be talking about $16 a month per household. It'll be a ton, I think it's $16 a month for a median household. That was the soundbite I was given. If we don't do that now, I would hate to imagine what that cost per month would actually be for a median household in just a few years. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that back in, this is the other question I should have asked before here, have we changed also in May, on May 10th, we had an agenda packet for a study session that talked about if there's no new revenue sources for the operations part. So that was road preservation, it's about the three city halls and all that. Now we're talking about the road maintenance. Has anything changed in the actual, because I think it's startling if I just read this, I know it was in your presentation, but I'm just going to say it again. In the scenario that there's no new revenues to support the maintenance and operations of the streets, which is a critical service for public safety as well as just the actual look and appearance of our city, if no new revenues, there would be, we would go for a staff reduction of eight full-time employees to zero. We would have pothole, asphalt, and tree trimming operations would be eliminated. Sidewalk repair and replacement would be eliminated. Traffic control maintenance would be eliminated. Signs and in-house pavement marking maintenance and repair would be eliminated. And it goes on. The contracted annual fog line, center line striping program would be retained at a reduced level. And I've brought this up a few times. I've had moms tell me that they, you know, in rainy events during winter time, because there is no middle line, they just kind of go towards the headlights of the car coming towards it and then, you know, they swerve to just make sure they don't hit them, because you can't see the road markings. Mowing and right-of-way landscape maintenance would be eliminated. Snow and ice operations would be eliminated. After-hours, emergency call-outs would be eliminated. Event support for the 4th of July parade and other community events would be eliminated. Regular and emergent requests for services from the Public Works Division and city departments would be eliminated. A liability fund of $45,000 per year is proposed to address immediate life safety issues requiring outside resources if the funding to the road maintenance division is eliminated. So when I heard that in May, it was startling, because if you think about our options that we have up here, either we completely lose a public service that we provide the public or we spread the pain across all the different services we provide. So it's either this or we take all of our services and we take our levels of service down across the city. And neither option really is a good option. But this option, you know, I hope the public understands, I don't want to raise taxes and paying $16 a month isn't exactly an exciting idea for me as well as anybody else. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't pay for this, you know, our public safety's, you know, we're going to be putting everybody at risk. It's going to be a dangerous place on our roads compared to now. If you'd only imagine what it would be like and these guys that do the maintenance on those roads, if we went two years without any maintenance. I mean, even the signs that say the speed on them would be covered with moss, I would imagine after two years. I don't know how often you guys maintain those, but so this is a big deal. This isn't just kind of like, well, you know, should we increase the, which I think is extremely important as well, and we talked about it, is the training to the fire department. You know, that's an important service too, but to totally eliminate a fundamental service that a local government provides is really just not an option that I'm willing to just make without going out to the public and saying, no, no, really, are you guys sure you don't want this service? Because we have to go to the voters to ask for the funds. So that's all I really wanted to say about it. I am in support of the levy. I think it's a critical service and it's the responsible thing to do. It's the most responsible thing I think we will have done since I've been on this council to make sure that we provide the road preservation and especially, and the road maintenance that is needed. One of the things too, that it's not really in the material that's been given us, but if, you know, people are very upset about congestion, if we let our roads crumble into gravel, do you know what the speed limit would be on our roads? It wouldn't be 35 miles an hour on gravel. It would be a lot lower. And I think that the transportation and the traffic issues would be just totally increased if we don't maintain our road system. So there's my happy day speech about why we should support this levy. So I think everybody's had a shot at talking about the levy. Here, I got to get back to tonight's agenda. A motion is in order. Councilmember McNeil? Hit the button.
I recommend moving.
It's moved by Councilmember McNeil, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dewar, to adopt an ordinance authorizing a November 8, 2016 election for a safe streets and sidewalk levy lift. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just want to speak in support of the motion. I was in favor of combining the sidewalks and crosswalks and overlay with the maintenance. I think it's, as Maryam said, it's the responsible thing to do. I can't imagine not doing this. I've heard a lot from the public, particularly parents of school-aged children and the safe routes to schools, and this is a real need. And I've said before, budgets and finance are examples of your values. And I think we need to show the public that we heard them and give them an opportunity to vote for what they say they want. So again, I'm in support of this and I think it's the absolute imperative thing to do.
Any further deliberation on the motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
I'll also be supporting the motion. We have, as a city, we've cobbled together sources of revenue, one-time revenues, to make the street fund operable over the years since we've lost dedicated streams of funding, which has been pointed out in the PowerPoint presentation. And we've just gotten to a point where we can't do it anymore. We can't do it sustainably anymore. You know, we got one-time monies from Snohomish County annexation, we got one-time monies from King County annexation. We've been lucky and successful with grant money. But as we've done that, our overall pavement condition index has steadily declined. And so I agree, this is a responsible and prudent action for us to take, to demonstrate to the voters why we are asking for this. We're not asking for the Cadillac version of bringing all streets up to a PCI of even 80. We're taking a prudent approach where it's a time-limited horizon and each year, we want to come back to the voters and say, this is what we've done with the revenue you've given us, to prove that we are acting as a responsible, efficient government and providing the services that they and we are paying for. So for that reason, I'm supporting this and I hope that the public will support it as well in November.
Would anybody else like to speak to the motion? I have one quick little soundbite so that the PIO has its official. $16 a month for a median home is the best way to catch up and stay ahead of the changes facing the Bothell community. Doing nothing is simply not an option. So seeing no further deliberation, we ready to vote? Okay. Cast your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. And thank you.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Again, I tried to stay out of the deliberation side of it, but there's a related nexus here to the action you just took earlier on the parks impact fees. And we have streets impact fees in place and that. But state law allows us to charge the developing community, the newcomers, their share of the impacts that they create. It does not allow us to use that money to correct any shortcomings or deficiencies. You alluded to that, but I think it's really important for the community to understand it. This is how the community can actually leverage their dollars along with the development dollars. And you put those two together and the Public Works Department's going to be able to get a lot more mileage out of this combined effort, not just the one or the other. And I have to, as the new kid on the block, use my experience from university place. We incorporated about 20 years ago, we had no miles of arterial sidewalks. And every year, we built some, whether it was a little or a lot, depending on what we got for grants.
year, we built some, whether it was a little or a lot, depending on what we got for grants. But now the city has over 30 miles of arterial sidewalks. That persistence pays off, but you've got to do a little bit every year. Some years you can do more, some years you do less, but you've got to do a little bit every year. This will give you that opportunity to match that up with what the development community is required to do. You'll be able to connect those gaps. You have development here, development there, but then you have a gap. You'll be able to build systems. It will make a difference. It does work, but you have to be persistent about it and consistent. So, and, and I think you made the other point, frankly, $16 a month, I don't want to get into the advocacy side, but it's a pizza a month. I mean, it's not out of line, what you're asking for, as far as the local community to pay their share to keep up with what we need to do. So, those are my observations as the new member of your staff for the last two weeks. So, been learning about this issue pretty fast. I guess one other comment I would say, because I don't want to be misrepresenting this to the community, what Aaron has had to do is say, well, if I have to balance the budget with these dollars, this is how I would do it. Frankly, I have a broader responsibility, and the budget that I will present to you, if we don't have this money to work with, I will not gut street operations. I won't be able to do what this money will allow it to do. But I will be recommending you take a look at all departments of the city. There will be no sacred cows. So, kind of deal with that. You were talking about, there are other cuts in police, fire, those places, we don't want to go, but we may not have the choice. So, I don't want to set the false expectations one way or the other. $16 a month prevents, it does a lot of good, prevents a lot of pain.
Thank you, and I'm Chief Manager. So we are on to, so we could take a break now, or we can take on, well, let's go for a break. Is everybody ready for a break? This is going to take some time. Okay. So we're going to take a 15-minute break, and we'll start back up at, oh boy, let's see, five minutes till seven, or eight, sorry, five minutes to eight. Urgent.